So many levels.
Well, you can, but I can't be here.
Well, I was in hospital till Monday afternoon. Quick meeting tonight?
I mean, if you want it, do it.
So, Phil, you're in charge.
Oh, thank you very much.
Can you believe, can you believe that that man from St. Luke
I die, die!
Said that that's the reason they won it?
I'm so glad.
No, why wouldn't he say that it saves us the tax consequences of the bond issuance?
He needs to be in the demulching.
He said, we're doing this because we don't want to pay prevailing wage. Guess what? It just failed.
Don't want to see is going to sign out?
Welcome to North Hampton County Council meeting. Mr. Giovanni, will you lead us in the pledge?
Please lead us to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Chafniski, will you please call the roll? Mrs. Ferraro. Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Cusick. Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Here.
Six, I'm sorry, seven present, two absent. Could we have a motion to approve the minutes of
Motion.
October 21st, 2021, and October 13th, 2021, the budget hearing?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No one signed in for the courtesy of the floor. Is anyone here who wants to speak? Tonight, we have a proclamation, and I don't know if anyone's here to receive it, but we were asked, so I'll just read it. Proclaiming November as epilepsy awareness month. Whereas epilepsy is a neurological condition, sometimes referred to as a seizure disorder, and is characterized by recurring seizures. And more than 209,000 Pennsylvanians live with epilepsy or seizure disorder. And whereas 1 in 26 people will develop epilepsy in their lifetime, and up to 50,000 Americans die each year from seizures and related causes, including sudden unexplained death in epilepsy. And whereas the Epilepsy Foundation of Eastern Pennsylvania leads the fight to stop seizures, find a cure, and overcome the challenges created by epilepsy, it is dedicated to ensuring that all people with seizures and epilepsy are able to participate in all life's experiences. And whereas state funding in Pennsylvania currently supports epilepsy foundation programs that provide technical assistance, training, and support to Pennsylvania's schools, nurses, teachers, and students on seizure recognition, first aid, and supports epilepsy foundation programs that provide patient education, public awareness, information, and referral services for children and their families living with seizures in our state. And whereas the Epilepsy Foundation Eastern Pennsylvania is celebrating 49 years of service and dedication to Pennsylvania communities, and the prevention and control of epilepsy can be achieved through continued community education and awareness programs. And whereas the Commonwealth has historically supported the creation and expansion of epilepsy support services and awareness programs through federal and state appropriations, and the epilepsy community recognizes November as epilepsy awareness month to promote epilepsy awareness and education throughout the world. Therefore, be it resolved that North Hampton County designates November as epilepsy awareness month, presented by the members of North Hampton County Council on this fourth day of November, 2021. So, thank you to them for all they do, and we will send that over to their offices. Next, Mr. McClure, do you have a report for us this evening?
I do, ma'am. Thank you for recognizing me. I'd like to start with some news. We have tested 6,000 people at our drive-through testing collaboration with Lehigh Valley Coordinated Health at 3100 Emmerich Boulevard. And we have given out 1,763 vaccinations. This has been a huge success, as North Hampton County is doing its small part to try and help crush the pandemic. And last week, we had the honor of having the Deputy Secretary of the United States Treasury, Wale Adayamo, here to meet with the folks who are responsible for LVHN Coordinated Health's drive-through collaboration with us. So, he got to hear not only about our collaboration, but he also got to hear from LVHN senior folks who have been dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic, what they've been going through throughout their entire system. And it was very enlightening. And that was our first stop of the day. And the Deputy Secretary already was telling us that he was carrying back to Washington how impressed he was with the work we were doing to try and fight the COVID-19 pandemic right here at home. He was trying not to be overly impressed, but he was. And then we went on a little bit further in our tour, because he wanted to see what your small business rescue plan was doing. And as you know, your plan is to have $25 million in the hands of over 1,000 small businesses. And we went to a daycare on the south side of Bethlehem. We went to a barber shop, and ultimately, we ended up at a restaurant and distillery, Social Still, all of whom were grant recipients. And the one thing that impressed the Deputy Secretary, and I asked him to carry back to Congress, because, you know, at that level, they testify, and let him know what's happening in the real world, on the local street. The thing that impressed him was all those small businesses were employing people. The daycare was employing people. The barber shop was employing people. Obviously, Social Still employs people. And we said in our remarks, you know, the small businesses are very important to us. We've demonstrated that time and time again. But who's always on our minds are the people who work for the small businesses, the employees of the small businesses. So, our efforts, your efforts, Council, are being recognized nationally for what you have done, not only with the CARES Act money, but with the American Rescue Plan money. And you should rightly be proud of all you've done in that regard. Been talking about Gracemonte a lot, right? And sometimes I think we talk about it too much. I mean, the transparency that we have brought to the issues that surround Gracemonte, even pre-pandemic, is really historic, or at least historic compared to the time that I've been here. No administration has ever been as transparent about Gracemonte as we have. You know, sometimes you have to sit through long presentations with our level of transparency around here. But one of the things I wanted to talk, there's a lot of talk about compensation being a barrier to us hiring. And I don't think it is. And we have done some analysis, and with respect to CNAs, the lower end of the spectrum of their package, which includes the hourly rate, medical benefits, and pension, is $27.34 an hour. And that's on the lower end. That's their total package. And that doesn't take into consideration things like shift differentials. That doesn't take into consideration things like hazard pay. That doesn't take into consideration things like incentives to be vaccinated. With respects to LPNs, that, again, this is on the lower range. The entire package is $34.14 an hour for LPNs. And again, that doesn't consider shift differential. That doesn't consider vaccine support. That doesn't consider hazard pay. And with respect to RNs for the entire package, it's $41.70 an hour without considering the incentives. Now, you can look at some of the top paid people in this county, and you will find on the first three pages dozens of Gracemonte employees. And that's a testament to them. They're the people who are doing the work of caring for the people. They're the people who are picking up the overtime, because they care about their residents, and because they understand the ability with the incentives that have been laid in through the years to really earn a solid middle to upper-middle-class living. So, there's a lot of talk about that, and I think we need to know the facts of what people are compensated. And I thought it was important to at least introduce that concept as we move forward.
Sorry, can you repeat what RNs make?
Sure. Now, remember, it's the total package.
Right, right, right.
It's hourly rate, medical benefits, pension, $41.70. Now, that's before shift diffs, shift differentials. That's before hazard pay. That's before any kind of vaccine incentives. So, I do not believe that money in the form of compensation is the reason why we can't hire.
But those are at the lowest scale, right?
No, these are, yeah, these are, these are lower. Yeah. Now, do we pay as much as hospitals? No. But one of the things I think we often lose sight of when we're having this conversation, we are a government entity. The funding for this, for this home comes from Medicare and, most substantially, Medicaid, right? So, that's something that we always have to keep in mind, that we are, we're not a private-for-profit entity. But I think you're compensated very well at Gracemonte. We're not free of COVID, right? I mean, we're just not. I know we'd like to feel that we are, but we aren't. And in particular, next door in our prison, we have about 12 inmates currently who have tested positive for COVID-19. And, you know, they have been tracking inmate intake positivity. So, when an inmate comes into the prison, as I think we've talked about before, they are tested for COVID-19. And for the entire year, the positivity rate of those inmates tested, we're talking about a couple thousand people, has been .08%. And then those inmates are quarantined for the quarantine period, which is 10 weeks, or, I'm sorry, 10 days or two weeks, something like that. So, essentially, the inmates are not bringing COVID into the establishment with them. That's just a demonstrable fact. The other piece of this that I think we need to talk about is the corrections officers have reported to us, now, there could be more, but this is the people who have reported to us to get the extra 500. That number is 44.4%, 93 out of 208. 44.4% are vaccinated. So, clearly, we have much more work to do in that regard as we're getting closer to the end of the year. There's no COVID at Gracemonte now, and obviously, not everyone at Gracemonte is vaccinated, but almost all of the residents are. And 65 and heading up percent of the staff is. There's no COVID at Gracemonte. There continues to be COVID at the prison. I think vaccinations are the answer there. So, we're going to continue to try and educate.
Could you, can I jump to qualification?
Sure.
The $500?
Yeah.
Still available till the end of the year?
Till the, yes, till the end of the year, right.
Thank you.
So, you have until, so they have until the end of the year to
And is that also at Gracemonte, or is Gracemonte?
No, Gracemonte, that's different. That's the 750. And so, that's going to
But that's still in place till December 31st?
Well, it is. And I don't know if you saw the news, but the Senator for Medicaid Services, Medicare Services, CMS, which is really the 800-pound gorilla of long-term care facility governance in the United States, has declared that long-term care, everyone in long-term care facilities must be vaccinated by January 4th. There's no testing, there must be vaccinated, and that includes Gracemonte.
May I ask you a question?
Sure. Sure.
I saw that. In fact, you just answered part of the question I had. January 4th, the President has said anybody that has over 100 employees or something, they're going to put out. So, does that affect, I mean, I know what you're saying with long-term, because those often have a separate kind of thing going. Is that going to impact governments, or is that just for businesses? Because by, if you take the broad definition, we're going to have to mandate everybody in the county government, work employees. Was that just for businesses?
No, well, so, we're not covered by OSHA?
Okay. I just didn't know if they wanted to.
So, we're not, so we're not covered by OSHA. So, you know, today, and I'll reserve the right to change my mind about this, too, based on legal advice. Today, I would say the only place the mandate is in force on January 4th would be Gracemonte.
Okay. That's all.
And that's because there are
Because of their licensing.
And financial penalties.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry to divert you, but I
No, that was, that was where I was going. And I also want to thank Council for, and then I'll, then I'll be finished, for tonight's Economic Development Committee review with St. Luke's. This is a very difficult decision for me as to whether to sign off on the TEFRA. As you know, the General Purpose Authority exists in part to assist non and not-for-profit institutions to do these bond deals. And this isn't some, this isn't some way for the, an independent agency, an independent, I'm sorry, authority, let me use my words correctly, to capture money. What the General Purpose Authority was meant to do is what it's doing now. And that's raising a dangerous, dilapidated building in Glendon Borough, where people can get hurt and killed. Children were playing in there, and the General Purpose Authority stood up and took control of that, and are about, they're about to raise it. They're about to demolish the Glendon Hotel. That in and of itself, removing that blight, is a public good. But the General Purpose Authority, that independent authority, is going one step further. And they're going to build, they're going to build affordable housing where that blight stood. Again, another public good. And this, what the General Purpose Authority is doing, could serve as a model for what we do with respect to affordable housing. You're going to get the Affordable Housing Plan very soon throughout North Hampton County. These are indispensable public purposes. The General Purpose Authority, when it does bond issues, gets a fee, and that's how it funds this public good. Without bond issues, it can't do public good. And its purpose, General Purpose Authority, its purpose is defeated. So, that weighs on me, okay? Also, the issue of, and give Mr. Lichtenwalter credit. He is a very honest man, very honest. He did not attempt to dodge the issue at all. And he came here, and he told you squarely, we're using this company so that we can avoid the Pennsylvania law. Well, I happen to think you should pay prevailing wage on projects. That's what you should do, because it's necessarily a living wage. But sometimes, you must evaluate what it is you are losing when you seek to vindicate your principles. And in this bond, in the 18 million, there is $6 million for Easton Hospital. Well, anyone who's been there knows that Easton Hospital could use the investment of $6 million in it. And that's a public good, too. And I have to balance those, I have to balance those interests. And, you know, at this time, balancing those interests, I'll be signing it. But in the future, I will, I will look very, I will, I will look askance at these, these documents as they're presented to me, if they're presented in this kind of context. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions or comments from Mr. McClure?
I just want to say, I saw your comments after the Secretary was here, and you talked about, you know, the business loans. But you did say, or I mean, grants, but you did say, and I thought it was a great point. You mentioned about going forward, a step ahead is, we have to look at wages. I think you had some comment to that effect. And people deserve good wages. And I thought that was an important thing to say. I hope I'm not, I'm not quoting you. I had something to the effect that you said.
No, and I was, actually, what
I just thought it was a good statement.
It occurred to me on the fly, when I was in, in the comfort facilities adjusting my tie, that they have the help wanted sign, they had, this was at Social Still. And they had, you know, $17, $25 an hour, $30 an hour. And I thought, you know what? That's the kind of wage, that's the kind of business we want to be supporting.
No, I just thought it was, it was good and important. I just wanted to thank you for saying that.
Mr. Myers?
Mr. McClure, with the shots we're handing out, are the people getting the third shots? They're supposed to get them?
I believe LVHN has started their booster program, and I think it started on Friday when we were there.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Lot?
Yes, I would urge, thank you, Mr. McClure.
Can we turn you up just a minute, Mr. Lot? Thank you. Go ahead.
I appreciate, I appreciate the report. And I would urge the executive not to sign off on St. Luke's. He is very honest. He came right out and said, we are skirting Pennsylvania law, but we do not have to pay a livable wage in the Lehigh Valley. St. Luke's is supposed to be good for our community. To make that statement, that that is why they're bypassing a GPA, which they've never done before. They're going out of state, which they've never done before, so they don't have to pay the citizens of our livable wage. I just, I couldn't believe my ears. So, I would urge you not to sign that. I believe St. Luke's will find the money, and will come around and realize their mistakes. They are a great part of this community, and they're all based on this. He referred to studies. You can get studies to show you anything. I can show you studies how good prevailing rate is for a community, how it lifts people up and makes them better, people are better citizens in the community. There's plenty of studies. And, you know, for him to say that, it just goes against what St. Luke's should be standing for. Thank you, Mr. Executive.
I understand, Mr. Lot. You know, I agree in principle with you. I'm just not willing to, at this late date, play chicken with the renovations that are going to take place at Easton. Because folks in this area, they deserve as high quality of medical care as anyone else gets. And a lot of folks from the Sleep Belt come down and use that place. And I'm afraid that if they don't have the 18 million included in this, that those investments won't be made.
So, I, and you feel that they're definitely going to leverage that against us.
Yes. Well, if I don't sign, Mr. Lot, they can't borrow the 18 million. They can borrow the rest of it, but they can't, they can't borrow the 18 million without my signature.
But I believe they reconsider how they're going about and come around and do it the correct way, or something that's better for our community. But thank you. I understand that you're in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I understand your point, too.
Mr. Heckman?
Yeah, and I wanted to say with Mr. Lot, I agree with you, Mr. Lot. But I will say, and listening now, is it going to come to us anyway, even though you're not signing it? I understand, though, because I could sit back and be silent, but I do believe the executive is facing a real Hobson's choice here. I mean, I didn't think as much about the whole pieces of it, and the Easton Hospital thing. That is so important. I don't like what he said. In fact, I was like, yeah, okay, I get what you're saying. This is all about money for you guys. But he is holding that over our heads with Easton. And I agree, Kevin, I agree with your philosophy 100%. But I can understand somewhat, I think, of where the executive's coming from, because Easton definitely could use an infusion of investment. So, it's a tough, that's a tough one. That is a dilemma. I'm just, I could be silent, but I'm just going to say, I can appreciate the difficulty you may be having. Living wages should be something, we've said it over and over again, and it should be prevailing wage, and I agree. But when you got these hospital guys coming, and that's a whole other matter. This isn't like a warehouse. So, I don't know. But I just wanted to say, I appreciate your difficulty.
And I can tell you, and I think the message that the committee sent earlier was probably heard very clearly. And I can tell you, if Easton wasn't in there, I wouldn't be signing it. But, you know, they did a public good when they took that over. And, you know, sometimes compromise is necessary.
Just want to make one comment real quick.
Go ahead.
I just feel like if we don't stand up to St. Luke's, that they're going to continue to circumvent the process and not use the GPA and never come back for a prevailing wage, once they know that they can dangle a carrot. Because if they know that we need something, they can leverage us. And I would feel, when I questioned the gentleman that was here, Mr. Lichtenwalter, he seemed to understand that the process was, that we had consensus over, that he needed to go through the GPA. And I know that you're going to do what you need to do, because you feel like it's in the best interest of the county. But I think ultimately, in the long term, we need to send a message to St. Luke's, because this isn't the first time that we've run into something with them.
Well, I think you have, and I think you sent a message. I really do. But the, you know, at the end of the day, Easton needs the infusion.
Mr. McGee?
Yeah, I echo Mr. Lot's comment, but I understand we have to do the deal here, because, I guess. But I guess I'd just like to lastly say, it would be nice somehow to, like, we didn't, we didn't really, I didn't really get enough information, and I just think that maybe we should send the message in writing. I think we need to educate the public about this. I mean, because if they understood how much good, I didn't realize how much good the Industrial Development Committee, you know, the stuff, the financial gain that they get, and they can, you know, so there's a community thing there. Prevailing wage is a community thing. It's a livable wage. That goes into the community. Those folks spend it, and all the small businesses gain it that way, and it lifts the community up. I didn't hear enough argument. I mean, he was clear. I mean, it was just about, it was about money. And I wonder how much they give out for, you know, community services, what they spend on that. But if they understood how it worked, you know, that would be the difference. You know, they have it right there. They could, they could use it. And, you know, and, well, so, that's
I agree with you, and I share your principles. I'm compromising mine in this regard to make sure that an underserved community has a better hospital to go to. And sometimes you have to make those choices. But I fully appreciate what you're saying. In defense of Mr. Lichtenwalter, I think he is the money guy. I think that's all he really, that's his purview in the hospital system, I believe. So, that's what, and he was really, how often is someone as honest as he was when they're coming before? I mean, we really, although we don't agree ultimately with the concepts that they live by in managing their system in that regard, borrowing money. But he was incredibly candid. I've never quite seen anything like that before.
I hope he sends us the information that we asked for tonight, and maybe we can communicate back to him to try to maybe give him, so he understands it a little better, or maybe somebody in charge over there does.
So, I think they know now, because they're probably watching, that I'm going to evaluate every time that they send one of these things to me, whether there's substantial public good which outweighs these very, very important principles that were raised here tonight. One, have the GPA, having the ability to do things like affordable housing. And two, the payment of prevailing wage. And Mr. Lot makes a really good point about, you know, trying to circumvent the current state-of-the-case law in the Commonwealth. So, I understand how difficult this is. Trust me.
I, I don't know how much I can or can't say about this. I have a lot of feelings, and this restraint is very difficult for me at this time. But I have a conflict of interest in this matter. What I don't have a conflict in is appreciating this project that we're doing with the GPA. Because having sat on that board for four years, suffered through, like, fixing Because having sat on that board for four years, suffered through, like, fixing this bridge project and, and getting through the morass of that, the thing that we shouldn't have been doing, to get to the, the good that we are, and to hear that a public entity in this county wanted to circumvent that because that money could, as you said, be continued, that's, that's the part that also disturbs me. And I guess I could speak to that as a member of the GPA as well. Because I always want to see the opportunity to money, for money to come through us so that we could turn it into greater good. And we have served both hospitals in the past, as well as other folks. And I hope that that doesn't become a matter of course.
Well, for context on both sides on that particular issue, there, there's no requirement that they use any of our authorities.
I know that.
They could, they could go to Bucks County or whoever has an authority, Lehigh County. And as a matter of fact, these entities do do a little bit of shopping to see, you know, where they can get the best fee, pay the best, the lowest fee. So, you know, there's no guarantee that if we played, you know, if we stood on our, our principles tonight, that they would use the general purpose authority for the 18 million anyway.
Oh, it's unfortunate.
It is.
Mr. Myers, maybe you could speak for me.
Okay. As the Eastern representative, I can appreciate the fact that they want to pour money to Easton Hospital. And I'm sorry I missed this presentation, because I would have asked them where they got the $10 million to pay Easton High School to name their name on the field for the next 10 years. Because if you're getting 18 and you gave up 10 million to put your name on a damn field, but you don't want to pay the people for prevailing wages, counterproductive in my brain. I truly appreciate it. But we also have an Anderson campus on the outskirts of Easton, and we now have Hecktown Oaks on the outskirts of Easton. So to say East is, the city of Easton Wilson needs Easton Hospital, yes. But in the same breath, we also have two other places we can go to. I'm torn on this particular subject. I wish I would have heard it. Instead of, I was studying something that we talked about earlier. I find this extremely difficult for you, because you have to make a very tough decision. And I don't envy you that. But I have a soft spot in my heart for people who are busting their butt trying to earn some money to make a living. And I've got somebody who's a private entity that's doing so much for the community, trying to skirt around it. It's a contradiction in what their philosophy is in my brain. And it's very hard for me to comprehend. I appreciate what they, what they're doing in Easton, I truly do. But, you know, at, at some point, where's your priorities as an organization? You know, are you, if you are as committed to this community as you claim to be doing, you wouldn't be trying to sidestep the middle class by not giving them a prevailing wage. But God bless them, if they can sleep at night, that's on them. I feel sorry for you because your back's against the wall. I understand where you're coming from. As the Eastern representative, I appreciate the fact that you're doing it. But my conscience is saying, my God, how can they sleep at night when they're doing something that? You just laid out $10 million on a contract for a school to put your damn name on for 10 years. And you want to cut the people off? Sounds like something to do in a decent school district. Yeah, I forgot about that. I'll let it go.
Other questions for Mr. McClure?
I do want to say though, and, and we've talked about this now. And I remember some years back, Mr. Hardy, they were doing something through GPA, and he gave a report. This was like maybe two, three years ago.
We were in courtroom one, I remember.
And they sort of made a veiled comment that we could have gone to Monroe County, but, you know, lucky you. And I'm thinking, you know, I get it, St. Luke's, it's a, you know, these guys, they do good. But at the same time, I just want to commend Mr. McGee and Mr. Lot. I don't think citizens in Northampton County know the, the amount of time and effort they have put in to ensure that people get treated fairly and decently when it comes to this concept of wealth equality, inequality, and pay and prevailing wage. And they've been champions of that since day one. And I've actually learned a great deal from the two of them. And I wish, I told you how I felt, and I agree, you've got a tough, that's where you get the big bucks, right, Lamont? But the thing is, but the thing is-
$85,000, you agree?
But the thing is though, yeah, it, it is, it is tough. I mean, the prevailing wage is so important, I mean, anymore. I, I don't even know why it's a huge, I know why it's an argument, I've been around long enough. But the thing is, I agree, this is a tough one. But I just wanted to give props to Mr. McGee and Mr. Lot. I, I think the citizens don't realize what, at times, maybe what they've gotten from these two gentlemen. That's all.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Sure.
He mentioned, like, an expedience about this.
Yep.
I don't understand that.
It takes a while to put a bond, these are, you know, what is it, 85 million? It takes a while to put, think about when we did the bond, which was smaller, to buy the Human Services building. These things take months and months to develop. And, you know, they try and get it to the market when they can get it to the market in an advantageous way. So they're probably at the, I don't know this, I'm speculating. They're probably at the point now where all the ink is dry on all the papers, and they're ready to go sell their bonds.
So, but he made it sound, and again, he's not here, he probably said he should come back, but we had no vote on it. He made it sound like everybody else has signed on the dotted line.
They did, all the other counties-
So has he come way before this date to ask for this?
I think, I think I had it like a week ago. And I was busy in the last week.
I, I, again, I, procedurally, not company-wise, I have some questions about the timing of this. I'm dancing all night, I'm going to stop.
It is-
I like my job.
It is.
I like that.
I, I, I will not ascribe motivations. It is not unusual to-
I guess it was just unusual to hear him say-
It is not unusual to get tight deadlines.
Okay.
I have sat here when administrations presented us things to vote on very late. That had to, that had to be voted on, or the orange juice bill wouldn't get paid.
Well, I can't wait to see-
I will never, I pledge never to do that.
I can't wait to hear about those. But it's a very disheartening situation.
I think, I think we should invite him and ask him what, what's going to happen there.
Yeah, he's a fiscal guy, that's how they call it.
Yeah, he, he's-
I want to make, we don't want to waste that much money.
He was, he's the guy in the system who could explain the-
There's another gentleman that usually comes with him, right? I, I think, I know the name, I'm looking at Mark, I know. I don't know who signs my check, I get direct deposits. So thank you very much, Mr. McClure.
I'm, I'm done, unless you have anything else.
Thank you very much. Old business, I have nothing listed, is there any old business, anyone clears to bring up? Under new business, we have the introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending the 2021 Northampton County budget, Department of Community and Economic Development, gaming and hotel tax grants, American Rescue Plan Fiscal Recovery Fund, Department of Fiscal Affairs, Balancing of Budget, Department of Administration, Emergency 911 Task Force Equipment, OSI Farmland Preservation, Sheriff, Department of Court, Administration Problem Solving Courts, Department of Public Works, OSI County Parks, OSI Environmentally Sensitive, Act 13 Environmental Initiative, Department of Human Services Development Fund, Grants, Children and Youth and Families, Area Agency on Aging, Health Choices, Mental Health, Developmental Programs, Early Intervention, Drug and Alcohol. Would someone like to sponsor this ordinance?
Madam President? I would like to, because of the fact that some of this is in here where I did not vote on it. But I want to make sure my name's involved with this one.
Okay, may I have a second sponsor? Mr. G. We will have a public hearing, debate, and possible vote on November 18th, 2021. Next, we have the consideration of filing an application with the Pennsylvania DCED resolution. Mr. McGee, will you introduce this?
Certainly. Okay, this resolution of the County of Northampton authorizes the filing of an application for funds of the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. Whereas the County of Northampton has desires of obtaining funds from the PADCED and Affordable House Housing Activities fundable under Title II of the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 and the Impeachment of Regulation of 24 CFR Part 92. And whereas the Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development has prepared all the documentations necessary to submit a request for the home funding and a request for the home community housing development organization operating, operating fund on behalf of the Community Action Committee of the Lehigh Valley. Now therefore be resolved that a housing need exists that has been identified in the local and state coordinated plan, and the proposed housing activity addresses this need. Be it further resolved that the County of Northampton will conduct the required citizen's participation process, it will be further resolved that the County of Northampton will assure the provisions of the other necessary funds to make the activities feasible. Be it further resolved that the County of Northampton will reimburse the Commonwealth for any expenditures found in, in the PADCED to be ineligible. Be it further resolved that the appropriate officer of the County of Northampton is directed to execute a certificate attesting to the adoption of the resolution and to furnish a copy of this resolution to PADCED. So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there any discussion on this matter? I had a question for Mr. Hartney or anybody from that office. Because we, you didn't get a lot of time during our meeting, which I appreciate that you kept it tight. But is there a specific amount we're asking for?
We're still finalizing the application, and so we'll be honing in on a number. Ballpark, I think it's going to be around $600,000.
And that's just for the one project, or?
That would be for the entire, for the Glendon Hotel and-
Housing development.
Yeah, so right now, we're talking about building five units.
We don't have a name for that yet, huh? Other than the Sprite Center? Mr. Myers?
Wait a minute, I got to compose myself.
All right, somebody else has a question? So the, so it doesn't need a number attached, you just need to make the applicant, and you're-
We'll, we'll attach a number when the application actually gets submitted. But we don't, we don't need a number for the resolution.
Now, my question is, we're doing this for this project, there are other projects that are, are trying to do affordable housing. Are we going to be doing the same facility as other organizations?
If anybody is working on an affordable housing project, we would love to talk to them and see if there's a way for us to partner.
Because I know of something that's going to be raised on South Side, and, and they're going to want to put the affordable housing over there. I will make sure they reach out.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or, okay, call for the vote. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you. Are there any other new business items to be discussed? Okay, do we have any council committee reports? Mr. Heckman?
Just want to remind people, we switched our meetings. We, our lively governance took the place of what would normally be Human Services. And Human Services will be before the, what time, before the next meeting? 3:30. And, and I did say at Gracel, and just to clarify, it's just, people have asked a lot of questions of me. And I said, fine, you know, we'll do Gracel now, and, and what you can ask are questions you want. But I think, to just let the administration know, I don't think there'd be any need for any more, other than the administrator, director of nursing, and fiscal person to show up. I mean, it's just basically informational, they've done the sheets. But I thought, since people, some folks have felt a little rushed on it, I thought, all right, fine, we'll do that. And then maybe the director's report if she wants to do. So that's all, I just wanted to let people know that we're doing it, reminding.
For Mr. Lot, since he's via on the phone, the Economic Development Committee met tonight. They had a presentation regarding the City of Bethlehem Lurda, some affordable housing options with the new Lurda that they're proposing. Discussion regarding the Bethlehem Moravian UNESCO status, which was very impressive and exciting. Discussion of a home application for the Glendon Hotel. And discussion regarding application for funds and PA Department of Economic Development, which was the, that we passed tonight. And we also had a presentation from St. Luke's. And if you were paying attention to the executive, the executive's report that was discussed then too.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. The Governance Committee held a meeting prior to this one. And as Mr. Heckman indicated, had a lively discussion on the concept of redistricting the areas or keeping them the same. Several options were presented to be considered. We could not come to a consensus on one, so we're going to defer any vote. We will probably present an ordinance on November 18th and then resume the discussion. And the reason that we will present the ordinance at that time is because we want to make sure we have time before the end of the year to make sure that we vote either to change or retain the same districts. It was, it was a Ron Heckman happy kind of meeting, because there was a lot of discussion. No, but thank you for everybody for weighing in, because it is, it affects everybody. And that's, and then the next budget hearing, the last actual budget meeting will be held next Wednesday. And then we can talk about the rest of the dates at that time. And it'll be at 4:30, correct? I believe it's capital improvements next week, Public Works, okay. And any liaison reports? Nope, nobody did anything this week. Okay, Council Clerk report. We all were busy doing other things. No, I guess I should say that I think procurement deadline is November 19?
One, one liaison, I'm sorry, I-
Okay, I'll double back.
The Planning Commission had a Pennsylvania, on a Friday, October 29th, at 10:00 a.m., the Planning Commission had a Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code Workshop. I guess they're, they're looking at, taking a look at the Pennsylvania Planning Code changes due to, you know, the, the discussion and the concern that the valley has with the, with the warehousing and smart development and what possibly they could make to the changes. There's going to be another, two more meetings, there's another one planned for this month. And that's all I have to report. If you want any more information, please go to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission's website. And they have a lot of the information posted on there.
Thank you. Back to the county clerk. Our procurement deadline is the 19th of November, is that correct?
Yes.
So if you have any items that you need to purchase before the end of the year, it has to be requested by that date. And Mr. Solicitor, anything? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mr. G, do you want to be the second?
Yes.
Since that was really close. Can I favor?
Aye.